Mr. Boyd?
Here.
Mr. Beveridge?
Here.
Mr. McCune?
Here.
Ms. Schultz?
Here.
Ms. Spelter? Mr. Geary?
Here.
All right, will you all stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so will we move to our public comment portion? Brian, would you like to read the...
At each regular meeting, the Board of Education reserves limited time for individuals wishing to address the board. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room and state your name. Tonight, we request that individual speakers limit their comments to five minutes. A staff person will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the five-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire board, and if a response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped recorded for broadcast on the district's educational access channel and audio recorded as a matter of public record. Thank you.
All right, our first speaker this evening is Tiffany Seaman.
Good evening, my name is Tiffany Seaman. This is my first time speaking to the Board of Education from a parent perspective. I have been a special educator, a classroom teacher, and a reading specialist trained in the Orton-Fillingham program. I've been part of curriculum committees, examined materials, and piloted programs. This district has a very special place in my heart. Many of the amazing educators are like family to me. I still have former students within the district, and now my own children at the ages of four, seven, and eight are at the critical ages for building foundational knowledge and literacy skills. I have been in conversation with the ELA coordinators and the Board of Education members through email and had the opportunity to meet with Dr. Jaeger yesterday in regards to my concerns about the recently adopted Teachers College Reading and Writing Units of Study by Lucy Paulkins from middle school, as well as the consideration for the units for K-12 writing that may be potentially adopted next school year. I still have many questions about this adoption. The Kansas State Department of Education Dyslexia Guidelines recommend each accredited school district utilize structured literacy as a explicit and evidence-based approach to teaching literacy skills to all students. Explicit instruction is shown to be a weakness of the units of study. School districts will be asked to evaluate resources for explicit and systematic instruction elements next school year. I have asked what other materials were considered, but have not been given a reply as of yet. I have also asked what curriculum evaluation tool is used to review the materials. Adoption and the consideration of adoption of the units of study for writing shows that there is a lack of consistency and vision. State initiatives and mandates are just beginning, but it is confusing that the district has invested in evidence-based practice through letters training and then adopted the units of study. In our conversation yesterday, Dr. Jaeger and I both agreed that we do not want our educators to be confused about the materials they are provided. Educators rely on their administration to provide a curriculum that aligns with scientific research and practical knowledge of how students learn. Superintendent Allison shared great points in regards to the importance of the science of reading and importance of sequential skills at the last Board of Education meeting. The units of study do not pass requirements for adoption in states such as Colorado and Arkansas, and I feel that that is concerning. Colorado's review process has two phases, and the document is openly provided to the public. In the first phase of the evaluation process, the Colorado Department of Education reviews programs on key elements of scientifically biased literacy instruction, including research alignment, explicit instruction, sequential instruction, and systematic cumulative instruction. Units of study did not pass Phase One of their review process. No curriculum is perfect, but our teachers deserve to be provided with materials that are best aligned with the science, what we know about how students learn to read and write. Through the science of reading, we know that the human brains are not, I'm sorry, are naturally wired to speak, but they are not naturally wired to read and write. Units of study are grounded, and the idea that learning to read and write occurs through exposure. Some children do learn to read and write without much explicit instruction. However, explicit instruction is good for all children and absolutely essential for many. In addition, fostering a love of writing is built by ensuring that our children are provided with explicit instruction in how to write so that they feel successful, not simply by providing choice. If the district truly believes that every student will be challenged and supported through tiers of instruction by all staff, why not choose curriculum materials that are most effective for the most students? I provided the ELA coordinators and Board of Education members links to over 20 resources when I emailed asking for consideration before the adoption of units from middle school. I have asked to be provided with the district's evidence to support the adoption of this resource. It will be even more critical that the district adopt an explicit writing instruction curriculum, especially at the elementary level. Curriculum is just one important piece, and there is no perfect curriculum. To be successful, we should look to invest entirely in structured literacy and writing knowledge curriculum and training. If we choose only programs that use direct, explicit, and structured approaches to our code-based language, we benefit all of our students. I ask that the district administrators take the time to better understand the reading science so that we can make well-informed decisions during the curriculum review process, as I've been assured that they will. For the Board to begin to action item 4.12 this evening, it's asking for approval to use Link grant funds to provide training for targeted K-18s. And Link funds have also been used to provide opportunities to visit schools in New York to observe implementation of the program. But I was told that this does not necessarily mean that these are the materials that the district will decide upon for adoption as a writing curriculum. ELA, the school district, is made up of remarkable educators and leaders who want to do what is best for our kids. They deserve the best so that they can better provide the best. If we really want to show our teachers our appreciation, certainly this week, we should consider providing them with the tools that they need to effectively support literacy development of our kids. Since it comes down to the district administration and the board to make the final call, we are counting on you all to make the best informed decision. I ask that you please reflect and consider what is best for all of our children. When we know better, we do better, and all of our children deserve the best opportunity to grow as readers and writers. The information is available to know better. The choice is available to do better for our educators and our kids. I thank you for your time, service, and consideration. I'm happy to be here with all our teachers.
Thank you. All right, our next speaker is Michelle Tonkinson.
Hi. My name is Michelle Tonkinson, and I'm addressing you all today about the medical mask exemptions that are supposed to be permitted within the ELA, the school district. Both of my daughters currently have exemptions, and to say that the schools have been less than accommodating would be an understatement. My youngest daughter attends elementary school, and the other is in high school in ELA. Both children have letters signed by their pediatricians. Both children have different pediatricians. My elementary school child has been repeatedly put into a mask when the school staff feel that it is needed. Her medical exemption does not state that this is okay. In fact, it states that she should not be masked at all. This child has been unmasked since the end of September, only requiring a quarantine once because her speech teacher, who was also maskless at the time, did test positive for COVID. This exposure did not result in my child developing COVID symptoms. It was completely unnecessary exclusion from her education and sped services. My second child has been unmasked since March 3rd. She has experienced bullying and extremely unreceptive attitudes from teachers and the nurse. While I was handing the nurse her medical exemption, the school's, the nurse specifically said to my child, "Don't you think your anxiety will be amplified knowing that by not wearing a mask, you could cause one of your teachers or peers to be exposed to COVID?" She has a teacher who talks to the students every class about the importance of wearing a mask. She has another teacher who uses a laser pointer to teach her when she needs help. She's been pulled out into the halls and questioned about not wearing a mask. She's been reprimanded in the halls as early as late as just this past Monday by an administrator for not wearing a mask. I'm bringing this to your attention because every time a parent files an SB 40 complaint, the medical exemptions are brought up, and parents are told that they can get an exemption if their child qualifies. I want it noted that many teachers and school nurses are not respecting these mask exemptions. They are questioning them, suggesting other options, recommending children wear masks in specific situations as an alternative to being mask-free, despite what the exemptions read. The Johnson County Board of Commissioners were all assured when they changed the mandate to a strong recommendation that the Johnson County Department of Health and Environment would not interfere with the school's decisions. Yet they did interfere by sending out harshly worded letters to all schools. My understanding is that at this time, all of these threats are nothing more than recommendations, and it's time that our elected Board of Education put the power of choice back into the parents' hands. There's no need for the extensive quarantining of large groups of children with no symptoms. There's no need for these face masks. Teachers, as well as anybody over 16 who want to be vaccinated, have all had that opportunity, with the district even making vaccines available in one of their buildings. Anybody wanting masks would still have the option to wear a mask if that's what's best for them, but we need to get back to normal. If you're sick, stay home. Otherwise, you belong in school. What I'm asking for is a gradual progression back towards normal. Nobody is asking the schools to completely ban mask-wearing or to jump in headfirst. Allow parents to make choices for their child and family. Take steps to get us to where we need to be in August. Start with recess in elementary school and gym in middle and high schools for the last two weeks of school, as well as all athletics. Nobody should be forced to wear a mask while exercising. Then follow Spring Hill. No required mitigation protocols beginning May 27th, and absolutely no forced mask-wearing going forward from that day on. You have the online school available for those parents who are absolutely opposed to this. Others can choose to keep masks on their children if that's what works best for their families. But every family should have a choice. These mandates have to go, and until they do, children with medical exemptions will continue to be harassed and bullied. And finally, for the parents and teachers pressuring the board and the superintendent to keep all kids in masks, how would you all feel if our elected board members voted to completely ban the use of masks, taking away your freedom of choice? Thank you.
All right, our next speaker is Brian Connell.
Can you hear me all right? Good. So, good evening. I am Brian Connell, and my family and I live in ELA, and I've been raising two amazing kids in both public schools. My oldest graduates next week from ELA West. Woo, got one out! My youngest is a sophomore at ELA North. We believe in public schools. My in-laws taught in Manhattan Public Schools for 30-plus years. My cousin's a school principal. Many of our aunts and uncles and our cousins are all in the public schools. So you will call me a public school advocate. I think it can be better. Right? So what I'm here for to do is that I want to make sure that we as taxpayers, so I kind of look at this group. You all, the Board of Directors, have a large corporate entity. ELA schools have an income of over, or a budget of a little over $450 million, at about $17,000 a student. You all are the executives. You're the principals, vice principals, school nurses. We all, as taxpayers, are the investors. We count on you. We lean on you. We lean on you to be great every day. Now, I know it's exhausting, but I'm here to fight for better, safer, and stronger public schools where we put kids first, once again. And I want to make sure that we put all of our energies, mine, yours, actions, activities, and decisions that focus on the kids first now and always, and as we move forward. There are symbols all around us. They help us illustrate, help us represent, they help us communicate. Symbols can uplift us. Some symbols can hurt us, and others diminish us. For example, I've got this jacket that's ELA West. Just a symbol alone, people see that when I'm in the grocery store and say, "Hey, do you work at ELA West?" No. I'm just a dad, just a supporter. This shirt some of you all may have seen two years ago. These things mean things. This shirt, some of y'all have seen that before. It means something. We are supposed to be protecting every single person, staff, teachers, and students. Some of y'all dads know what this one is. This one represents nine years at Cedar Creek Elementary volunteering as a dad of dead students. And so this is my shout-out. I had a dad tell me, make a shout-out. This is all the dads who spent a lot of time in the schools, and to the moms. But we moms and dads miss our schools. We miss being with those kids, and we miss being with those incredible teachers who say, "Hey, this student needs a little extra time this time, Brian." So these are symbols that represent... I have one last symbol that I want to make sure I bring out that everybody sees me carry around. I know everyone laughs at me. I don't care. This is an AED. It represents pretty emotional time. This jersey was cut off my son at about this time two years ago tonight. He collapsed with a sudden cardiac arrest. He was dead. But I have started to come to these board meetings for the same thing I'm going to say now. He was at a school event with school administrators, with school coaches, at a school that had an AED, with people in the stands, bystanders, who knew how to use it and came out. And because he was at a school event, he's alive. And I truly believe that kids, teachers, staff, and our community are safest together in the school. But we also have symbols. These masks, they represent a really negative symbol. Kids are getting way too used to them and not even thinking about it. My daughter made a comment about a kid that would walk two miles from ELA North, and we saw him coming to and from school, still wearing a mask, and just down like this, and laughing and puffing. She said, "He probably forgot he even has his mask on. He's 19 blocks from ELA North. Take off your mask and breathe." So I'm asking you all to make sure that you all start rethinking the symbolism that each of you all are displaying. We understand that you're trying to make it safer and safest, just like this AED. I'm not advocating that every one of your kids go get a heart and cardiac arrest, even though 10,000 kids a year die. The number-one killer in public schools is a cardiac arrest. I am not forcing the symbol on all of y'all. I'm asking you all to be aware of it. And so the same is what I would advocate for as we talk about masks. Let's start that transition. I'd like Dr. Jaeger and Dr. Allison to proffer up to the group that we start with the elementary kids. Let them have the last week or two of school at recess. Recession follows all the CDC rules. Unmask them a little bit. Start that transition. Rebuild the community trust that we need you to show, and we need you to have the community reflect back to you that we respect each other. The last thing I want to do is I want to make a shout-out. Where's, uh, Tim Brady? Is he here? You, my sir, my good sir, the MyHeartCheck people said you individually are the single greatest hero in having, making it happen that we had two cardiac events over at the, by the tech center. I asked him how it was, and he said, "Without Tim Brady, we wouldn't have had so much success." So thank you. And kudos for Dr. Herman and Dr. Novak and Mr. Merton, the Principal Novacek, for the foresight of it's going to rain on prom on two last high schools and finding creative ways to move it in. That's what we want. We love that, and we need to always recognize those who are creative and strong and get outside the box. And that, as the community, that's what we want from you. And that, with that, I'm going to say thank you for the evening and thank you for your time.
All right, our next speaker is Jennifer Gilmore. All right, so we'll skip that to Megan Bricks.
Good evening. It's so good to see you all. We're down to nine and a half more days, but who's counting? Tomorrow's Field Day, and our kids get to have a field day. Our first graders get to have their first field day, and we are pumped. And I'm so excited for all of our end-of-the-year events that we get to have. We did not get to have them last year. So even though it's not going to look the same, even though when we are doing all these end-of-the-year events, especially with our fifth graders, it looks nowhere near the same as it would in a typical year, I remind them and we remind them, they get to have it. They have this opportunity that last year's fifth graders didn't have. And so I just want everyone to remember that we're nine and a half more days at the elementary level. We can do it. We have stayed so strong, and I thank you all for standing strong with teachers, with students, with families, and keeping us in school, keeping our students safe. I know talking to my own nurse, she's still keeping all of her tracking of data. It's not like it just stopped. So she's making sure that throughout our Field Day and throughout our fifth grade graduation ceremony, that we are using all of our safety protocols so that no one will be at risk. So it is so important to me that you all uphold those opinions that you all have had from the very beginning, and I really appreciate that. I want to tell you that, yes, my contract ends and I get to have a summer, but this summer I've decided I'm going to work. I'm going to work on creating better communication between me and teachers and finding out what they want to be heard about. I'm dedicating my summer to helping all of our educators and students feel that they have as much of a voice as they can. And so I hope this summer I can work with you all to work on our communication because we really need to work together. This has been the craziest year, and we have made it. We're almost there, but we can grow. This allows us so much room to grow as a Board of Education, as an administration, as a school district. And I am so passionate. I know anyone who knows me knows that they've never seen me this passionate until this year, but I love it. I am running with it. I will be here. If you need me, you call me up. I will be there to talk to you, give my opinions, get other educators involved. I will be there for you. Just ask. I'm here. Educators are here. We want you to hear our voice, but we need you to ask us for our opinions. We need surveys. We want you to ask for our input. So I really look forward to continuing that as we transition with Dr. Jaeger moving into the fall. So I really look forward to that, and I want to thank you for all that you've done, and cheers and success to all the amazing teachers that have made it through this entire pandemic. Teacher Appreciation Week has been the best this year, and the kids have made us feel so amazing, just seeing them each day coming to school and just being there. So with that, I thank you all so much, and I look forward to seeing you all in the fall.
All right, and our last speaker is Christian Hardy.
Hello, ELA District Board members. My name is Christian Harding, and I am a junior at ELA Northwest. It has been brought to my attention that as of next year, the ELA School District plans to remove the 50-minute lunch period. Albeit unintentionally, this would have negative consequences to students both academically and to their mental health. Allow me to explain why. The mental break provided by the 50-minute lunch period increases students' productivity, energy, and creativity. Secondly, allowing students to have a longer break improves mental health by reducing stress and including decompression time. Next, the long lunch break allows students to visit teachers and provides additional work time. Fourthly, the 50-minute lunch period gives students adequate time to eat, go to the bathroom, and meet other personal needs. Most importantly, a student survey conducted by our senior president-elect Jenna Klein revealed that out of 125 students, 100% of them answered that the long lunch period improved their mental health. Not only this, swaths of students responded in the written response section that the long lunch break allowed them to complete additional homework, get help from their teachers, and relieve lots of stress out of their lives. In conclusion, students of the ELA School District benefit exceedingly from the 50-minute lunch block. As board members, it is your responsibility to ensure ELA students receive the best education possible. Therefore, it would be pure malfeasance to ignore our input. I trust all of you will make the right decision and include the 50-minute lunch block next year. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our public comment section. We will go into 3.01 Teacher Appreciation Week presentation.
Malfeasance. I got it. I'm going to use that tomorrow at work.
Good evening. Thanks for letting me be here this evening. I want to start, first of all, with an apology. It does say that I'm going to introduce a video. It's just me, so sorry about that. I am, though, here to speak about Teacher Appreciation Week, which is a partnership between the National PTA and the National Education Association, celebrated this week. And, you know, as I got ready to come speak to you tonight, I thought about, in 1953, when Eleanor Roosevelt asked Congress to set aside a day to honor teachers of the nation, I'm sure she probably never imagined a year like this one, that administrators and teachers and all the staff and what they were capable of doing during a pandemic. When you think back to last year, our buildings were closed. You were meeting via Zoom. Mr. Allison was nice enough to read a comment thanking teachers from ELA NEA in recognition of American Education Week, and it really was one of the times that many of us thought was the most difficult in our teaching careers. And then this year came. Thankfully to you, you were able to delay the start of school to allow our educators to prepare to teach in multiple learning modalities. They worked to, we worked to prioritize student learning goals and implement new technology really at all areas. This year, I haven't had a lot of time for reflection, but when I do, it is absolutely apparent to me that the educators of the ELA School District are some of the most creative, passionate, and energetic staff you'll ever meet. I want to highlight the experiences of three educators in hopes that you will appreciate even more the task of teaching during a pandemic. The first educator I'd like to highlight came to ELA schools this year from a much smaller Kansas district. In fact, they were recruited to come here by a career educator in ELA who really believes in what we do as a district for students and families. For their contract, they were asked to take on a new grade level and to teach in a remote setting at the elementary level. And to me, even one of those would be daunting, but they took them both on and had great success. At semester, though, with student enrollment changing, they were now needed at another school in a different grade level and in person. They were able to meet students' needs during a pandemic and left behind relationships that they had built with staff and students, and they were ready to start over, weathering those disruptions in their professional lives to put students first. The second educator I want to highlight has taught remote students all year at the high school level. The curriculum that they work with includes classes of heritage Spanish speakers. This educator not only has transformed lessons and content to meet the needs of their students, but they've also gone beyond the norm to build relationships, meet their students' emotional needs, and make sure that their families were supported during the pandemic all through a computer screen. As students had family members that were directly impacted by COVID, they helped them grieve. They helped them balance the need to work to support their families and their schoolwork, and they helped to keep their culture alive even during remote learning. Did I mention they were also working on their doctorate during this entire time? Finding the way to balance all that, they've achieved so much this year. Finding the way to balance all that, they've achieved so much this year. The third educator and final educator I want to highlight tonight is an elementary educator. Our elementary staff began the year in a hybrid mode in an attempt to get our youngest students back in the building, but also to allow for physical distancing and other ways to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. Hybrid meant not only teaching those students who were with them in the building, but also bringing in via technologies the students that were learning at home. And then after just a few weeks, our elementary students transitioned back into full in-person learning. This elementary educator created the most fun and creative routines and procedures so that the kids felt safe and loved, but they were still able to mitigate spread in their classroom and in their school. The heartbreak of not completing last year with students, for them, has been replaced with the joy of a more traditional year and more normal celebrations. One year ago, it was absolutely impossible to imagine what we would have asked of our educators in Olathe. They have absolutely modeled for their students and our community the core competencies of the Olathe School Strategic Plan. They've been critical thinkers, problem solvers, they're resilient, they've looked out for social, emotional well-being of their coworkers and their students. They've been creative and innovative. They've communicated in ways that we never thought we would be able to. They've shown initiative and self-direction and worked on cross-cultural skills. This year, above all others, please reach out and thank an educator during Educator Appreciation Week. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to 3.02 Real World Learning.
Tonight, we have three experts in real-world learning. They're going to introduce themselves when they pop up, but you're familiar, obviously, with our strategic plan and our focus on market value assets and us as a system really looking at the opportunities that we provide for our students once they're in high school. So I'm excited that this group is going to share with you tonight the things that have been accomplished this year, even though it's been a very interesting year, to say the least, the work has continued in this department, and they're going to share some of that with you this evening.
Good evening. I am Barbara Gonzalez and I am the District Career and Technical Education Coordinator. With me tonight is Alicia Jackson, our College and Career Readiness and Counseling Coordinator, and Angela Epps, our 21st Century Academies Coordinator. And we are part of our district's Career Pathways Team. This team works with teachers to help support them in helping to advance forward information and prepare our students for making those career decisions related to what they might want to do in the future. And we are excited to really have this opportunity to speak with you tonight and share with you some of the things that we've been able to do during this quite challenging COVID year, and despite those challenges, we've been able to tretch forward. So we're going to ask you to do a little imagination with us and to take a trip back in time and to think back to when you were in middle school and thinking about what you wanted to be when you grew up. And think about what career you thought of, and is that the career that you're in today? When you were in middle school, did you create a four-year plan for what you were going to take when you were in high school? And how did you decide on what post-secondary institution you would go to and what kind of training? And when you graduated from high school, had you earned any of the following? Had you earned any college credits or industry-recognized certifications or participated in entrepreneurial experiences or completed an internship? These are all things that we are asking our students today to think about and to navigate, and hopefully by the time they graduate, will be able to attain one of these.
Evening. I'm going to bring up an image that is probably really familiar to all of you, as many of you helped develop our Portrait of a Graduate. What we are super excited about with our Portrait of a Graduate and our career pathways and where we are going is that everything that we hope and dream for our kids with career development is directly tied to our Portrait of a Graduate. And for us, that is very exciting. One other thing to think about and that we think about as we plan is that these categories don't live in silos. And it's important for us, as we engage not only with our high school students, but with our elementary and middle school students, that we're thinking and talking about how do our academics and our career dreams and our social, emotional well-being fit together when we're thinking about our futures and our future careers? So if you have not seen this poster yet, the state of Kansas has done a wonderful job developing a career development almost poster that we follow for kids. And this is our elementary model. You'll see in this elementary model that it's very generic, and that's what we do in elementary. We introduce basic ideas of career development and what future thinking might look like for them. The idea is to see big picture. And also, the idea is we talk about future thinking, what a cool skill to build in our kids, and really sometimes a coping skill too, when you think about future thinking. In our elementary schools, you'll hear adults saying things like, "What do you want to be when you grow up?" Or even better, "How do you want to help?" Because when we think, "Gosh, am I in a class and I really love organizing?" Well, what a cool career skill that you get to have. Or is this the kid that, when we have a new kid in class, we always say, "Hey, Theo, come introduce yourself to this kiddo. That kid is probably going to be in a helping profession someday." So those are the kinds of things happening in our elementary schools all the time, even this year. But ultimately, this is one of my favorite pictures. In our elementary schools, we want to build excitement and wonder for our kids. We want them to know that their possibilities are endless and that we are going to be here as a school system to support them on their journey and to support them in their homes and their parents with their journey. So to look at a super fun event that we even got to do this year, in our fourth grade, our kids participate in an event called Careers on Wheels. And normally, some of you, I think, have even been to Careers on Wheels. It's at Seaback, it's huge, they go in different stations. Last spring, we didn't get to have Careers on Wheels. So our elementary counselors said, "Hey, no matter what, we are doing Careers on Wheels this year." So it gave us, as a career team, the opportunity to think creatively. How are we going to do this? So Angela actually became an expert in Flipgrid for us, because none of us had used Flipgrid yet, and learned that format. Then we partnered with Junior Achievement to bring in even more ideas. And then with that, not only did they bring career professionals, but we were able to partner with some people that don't normally get to come to Careers on Wheels. There's a pediatrician who's a parent in Olathe, but she doesn't get to go because she's treating patients during the day. But she made a video for our Careers on Wheels and students could watch that. And how cool for us to be able to engage with our community in a different way. So to point out a few of these pictures for you, we developed a career passport book this year, which we've never done before, something that we will actually continue to do because the kids really liked it. So that's a perk for coming, for going through what we went through this year, there's lots of perks. So you'll see that the students have the career passport book. You'll also see in this picture, we have a remote teacher that engaged, all of our remote kids did Careers on Wheels too, which was really neat. Then we had some class, class activities with careers, those are students learning from a yoga instructor. She also talked with them about what it's like to be a small business owner. So really neat things happening, and then we threw in a live version for you. That's somebody from Think Wildlife Management, working with some animals, and the kids are super excited there as well. Next year, we'll be back in person, but those resources that we used this year, I know that we're going to use in the future. So then with middle school, you'll see here, as we have images popping in, that in middle school, it gets a little bit more in-depth, which is developmentally appropriate. We're going to talk a little bit more about specific careers that they could think about for their future. Then with that, during middle school, and some of you, I think, have middle schoolers, you'll hear them talk about an individual plan of study. And an individual plan of study is actually one of our state board outcomes that students start engaging in during middle school. One of the ways that we engage with students with their individual plan of study is through a program called Zello. And Zello asks students to take interest surveys and really analyze what kind of learner they are and how do their interests and skills maybe tie into a future profession? It even asks students, like, "Do you want to go to a two-year school maybe after high school, or would you like to go straight to work?" And then it customizes their interests and their plans for the future to help them think about what that might look like for them, not only in the future when they're an adult, but how is that going to translate to middle school and high school for you? Within the individual plan of study, students also develop a course plan, and that starts in eighth grade. So our eighth graders get to look at what are our interests, what are our skills, what do we want to do after high school, and how might those tie into what classes I might take? And what's great is we've been able to continue to do all of this work this year. So when, even when we come back next year, our kids have already engaged in those kinds of activities to help them pick their classes for the awesome 21, 22 school year that we're all going to have. So I think next Angela, maybe? Oh, one more? Oh, good. Oh, good. So to give you guys some images of Zello, you'll see here that all students have a landing page. They will get progress on their yearly lessons that they do with mostly counselors. Also, teachers are engaging with kids, which is really cool. We have high school teachers even going in and seeing what their students' career interests are and then bringing in guest speakers or having guest speakers zoom in to support their inquiry and development. So you'll see that course planner is there. Even our high schoolers get to where they are applying for colleges and scholarships. They keep track of their community service hours, develop a resume. So lots of really great life skills that we utilize Zello for.
So you might remember that we did some activities in fourth grade with the elementary students to explore careers, but we also do activities and events with the middle school students. So the seventh-grade Career Pathways Fair that you see on the slide is an event where we bring all of our seventh-grade students staggered throughout the day to Johnson County Community College so that they can visit with high school teachers and students and find out about the career pathways available to them. As a district, we recognized a need to share with our middle school students the options that they had to explore in high school. Our target audience is that seventh grader so that they can start exploring just a little bit earlier. We continue to explore with the students in their eighth grade year so that they will continue to make some of those connections, and then they'll be even more prepared to be doing their IPS and their enrollment for high school. This year, due to the pandemic, we had to make the seventh-grade Pathways Fair virtual. And again, we thought outside the box and we used all of our tools that the teachers were using in the classrooms, we took that into our Career Pathways Team as well. And so we made it virtual and we created an interactive website. And through that website, the seventh-grade students were able to interact with videos of current students showing things that they're doing in their programs and to be able to, sorry, and to be able to look at, review their course plans and to reflect on how their interests might be translated into their own high school programming and experiences. Next year, our hope is to take this back to an in-person event at JCCC where the seventh-grade students will be able to peruse the different booths and display stations of the high school's career pathway options. So in high school, we see another level appear on the flower poster next to the career cluster buildings where students are able to choose a career pathway to explore. So just to review, the petals are the career fields, the buildings are the career clusters, and the career pathways are written out next to the buildings. As families prepare to send their students to high school, they will be faced with a lot of options. One of the things we have done this year is try to help our students and families understand it all. We have gathered all of our options under the umbrella of Career Pathways. Our umbrella covers or includes 21 different career and technical education pathways, with eight of them at all five comprehensive high schools, as well as performing arts and visual arts that are also available at the high schools. We also have 15 specialized 21st Century Academies at select high schools. This is a transfer option for some as students attend the high school where the academy is located. And we have eight Olathe Advanced Technical Center two-year programs for juniors and seniors. These students attend their home high school for half of the day and OATC for the other half. And this poster is one that we use in our schools. It was adapted from the state model to specifically represent Olathe High School options and to display all the career pathways offered to students in our district. You can see that it is vast. And so we are a district, one district with many options, and no matter what school a student goes to, they will have options available to help them prepare and meet their career goals. So a few years ago, we had the opportunity to start engaging with the Kaufman Foundation in a regional Kansas City metro area effort to scale real-world learning opportunities for students. And we had a lofty goal of 100% of our students graduating with at least one market value asset or an MVA. And MVAs can come in the form of different opportunities from internships and client-connected work to college and articulated credits that students can earn, industry-recognized certifications, and entrepreneurial experiences. You may recall some of these from the questions that I asked you at the very beginning. And that we have this district Career Pathways Team, which the three of us are part of, and we have some additional members that are a part of as well, that are helping to scale these efforts in our district so that students are graduating with MVAs. And I can tell you, I just got some data hot off the press today from our data specialist that currently our class of 2021 has approximately 25% who have attained at least one MBA. And I will tell you that our goal that we set with the Kaufman Foundation when we started this work for this year was 30%. So in this COVID environment, we are not too far off from where we thought we wanted to be, and we're not quite there, but we think that we did a great job this year of persevering and pushing forward. Of those MVAs, the, about 20% of them are college and articulated credits. 1% is certifications, that's an area that we want to grow, and then about 4% are internships, and again, another area that we would like to see grow. So our work with the Kaufman Group allowed us to take a look at other districts from across the nation and vision what our district might be able to do different or expand. And so in a debriefing with district administration, some of you in this room were part of that, and principals, we were able to reveal a unified message that in order to scale these efforts in our district, we would need to put in some district support positions to be able to help us move forward. And so with that, our Kaufman Group grant this year, we were able to hire career pathway facilitator positions. So we have two of them. Next year, we're expanding with one more, so we'll have three total district-level positions. And these positions are responsible for helping to cultivate those positive and productive relationships with businesses and industry and our civic networks, and to ensure that we have a steady supply of quality, real-world learning opportunities for our students and also for our staff, because we like to send our staff out during the summers to do externships so that they can gain that real-world learning and bring it back to the classroom. And these positions also assist
And these positions also assist the teachers in buildings with career and technical education instruction. They also help with promoting some of the events that you heard about in our presentation tonight, the organization and execution of those, and also just building those industry connections so that we can continue to add more real-world learning opportunities. Additionally, we knew that there was a data management piece to this and that taking a look at all of that data would be an overwhelming task to add to everyone's already full plate. So we created an MVA data assistant who has been working this year to track all of our data and make sure that we are staying on target with meeting our goals. So our district's strategic plan, as you know, is designed to meet the needs of all of our students, including providing multiple avenues for students to obtain those market value assets. And we are proud to continue to provide all our students with these real-world learning opportunities to help them meet their specific career goals that they have set for themselves. Are these big goals? You bet. But we would not want anything but the best for our students and are thankful that we live in a community where we can partner not only with our staff, but also our local business partners and to support our dedication for career pathways for all. I think Alicia's going to take us to the home.
Oh, good, the website. Everybody should go. Anybody watching in the beautiful world of YouTube right now should go to the district website. On that district website, you'll see career pathways. That website will show you everything that we're doing, that we've done this year. There's an awesome website that's been developed to show all of the programs that we have in our high schools. What is neatest about that website? Not a word. But what is most neat about that website? Is that kids developed these. Kids and teachers worked so hard to develop all the videos and everything that our seventh graders participated in and will continue to use that. Our high school principals thought that website was super cool. So we're looking forward to using that even more. And thank you, guys, for giving us the opportunity today to share with you. We know that you are big supporters of everything that we're doing. And just thanks to you and thanks to our community for letting us open doors for kids.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have a couple. Great job, ladies. I'm so excited to see this. So question for Angela, I think. The seventh grade Career Pathways Fair. So when you have it at JCCC, is it in coordination with other school districts?
No, it is just Olathe schools. You know, we have 10 middle schools with, you know, large classes in each of those. So we rotate, what is it, like over 2,000 kids through in a day? And they come in sections for about 45 to 50 minutes. It's a, it's a well-oiled machine, let me tell you. And then the academies, the OATC programs and the CTE pathways have booths with students and staff there, and then they rotate through each of those. Then following that, the fall after that in eighth grade, they will go to the same spot at Johnson County Community College, and they will do a similar activity, but it will be business and community partners where they can connect what they learned about their high school options with potential careers.
I love that. I love getting our kids into the college facilities because sometimes just the nerves, you know, of, I don't know if I belong here or not. And if they're somewhat familiar, I think they're much more likely to, you know, branch out, especially first-time college attendees, you know, and families.
And Johnson County Community College has been a great partner with us.
I'm so glad to hear that. So on the market value assets, entrepreneurship, what would, what would that be like? Can you give me an example?
Yeah, we were actually just talking about that tonight. And we need to expand that. We don't really have many of those that we're tracking right now. And I don't think it's because we aren't doing them. I think it's just because we haven't attacked it yet. But it's something where you see a student beginning with a concept, developing a prototype, developing it into an actual product, doing the whole business plan, marketing it, and putting it into action. That would be a perfect example of an entrepreneurial experience, almost like a shark tank. We know that we have teachers that are doing Shark Tank-style pitches. I just saw one tweeted out the other day in our entrepreneurship class. And those are the perfect examples of what we need to capture and capitalize on and start tracking that data as well. I, I'm confident that we have them already happening. We just have to figure out how we're gonna track them.
Yeah, it's kind of an organic process.
You bet.
And then the externships for our teachers, I love that. Do they apply for that, or what's that process look like?
They do, and that is actually something that we've done in our district for a number of years. And we put out a, an application usually in the spring where teachers can apply. And then we have Perkins Grant money that is allocated to helping support and pay a stipend to those teachers so that they can go out and work over the summer. It's usually either a one or a two-week stint that they do with a couple of different businesses, and they are able to work as if they were there as a real employee, but they're gaining that industry knowledge and skills so they can bring it back to the classroom. In turn, we ask them to, of course, do some teacher things with it. They have to develop a lesson plan, share their, their skill training with their fellow colleagues so that that, that investment doesn't go to waste. We want to make sure that we are spreading the wealth across our system.
I love that. Thank you so much.
Had a couple, couple quick questions. I was fortunate enough to go on a couple of trips with Kaufman Foundation and to see some of the things. And I feel like there's a, there's a lot that we can be doing. There's some that are, like, I think in Dallas, for instance, there were some amazing things going on that we're not ready for, I get that. But how often do you see us kind of changing something? Because it's not an easy change to change our academies. The curriculum you can adjust, but a lot of the, like, specific industry information and even some of the clusters, I know, are controlled at the state level more. But how do we evaluate when it's time to, you know, go about changing an academy or getting rid of one? Or just, because that's obviously a time process that the kids have put into.
That's a great question. Our district-level team that we have assembled this year is actually gathering data and assessing some of those things as we speak. And so it'll be a matter of looking at that data. We additionally have work that we do with the Perkins, and one of our requirements with that Perkins grant is to conduct a comprehensive needs assessment, and it has to be repeated every two years. This year is the second cycle that we'll be going through. And so we'll begin that process, and it's an Overland Park Regional Group that is, that does it together. So we'll be with Shawnee Mission, Blue Valley, Gardner, DeSoto, and Olathe. And we will work with Johnson County Community College. And part of that needs assessment looks at the different pathways that we offer and looks at the workforce data that is coming in from our region and whether or not we are meeting those workforce needs. And so I think that this will be a crucial year as we engage in that comprehensive needs assessment to really assess what we are offering our students and maybe what we need to tweak a little bit. I think that we could also send out some community surveys. One of our, you know, speakers that, that addressed you tonight talked about getting input, and I think that that's a really valid point. Gaining into our, our community input will be very important in that process.
Great, thank you.
I just wanted to add a little bit onto that. Our academies, 10 of the 15 academies have a CTE pathway embedded in them, so they are following the state competencies for that. All of the, the CTE pathways and all of the academies, even if they're not a CTE pathway, have advisory boards that guide them with their instruction and equipment and what's, you know, industry standard right now. So we are always looking at that. You know, in the past, we've retired academies and we've created academies. So we're always working on, you know, what is, what the numbers are and what the interests are. And I think we've got a really solid foundation with our academies right now, and they all are thriving. So.
Thank you. Good job.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, and we will move on to our next presentation, 3.01, Summer Social Emotional Support.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Angie Saliva. I'm the Director of Social Emotional Learning and Mental Health Services, and I'm really excited to share some of the things that we are going to be offering this summer. I want to start by giving a little bit of a history lesson. In 2017, we, for the very first time, offered mental health opportunities for our students during the summer. During that time, we were able to do that because we had interns. We were partnering with Friends University and their Marriage and Family Therapy Program. And we had therapeutic interns in the summer, and we needed to give them something to do. So we started offering our summer mental health clinic. We started that, and it was run at Prairie Center, which was a great location. But for those of you who know where Prairie Learning Center is, it's kind of at the edge of our district. It's not very centralized. At that time, in 2017, we were able to serve approximately 60 students during that time. The nice thing about our summer mental health opportunities is that it is free and open to all Olathe Public Schools students or staff members. And so we were very blessed to have that. This year, we get to grow and we get to expand. And I feel like a kid on Christmas Day to be able to share this information with you. Thanks to the Olathe Public Schools Foundation and specifically the very successful fundraising event that they had in March, The Taste of the Town, we get to expand our summer mental health clinic. And so some of the new features, I'm really excited to share with you. First of all, that centralized location. We are going to be able to hold this at Mill Creek Campus. I'm really excited about that because at that downtown Olathe location, it is more in the center part of our district, which reduces travel time for our students. We also were able to expand the amount of providers that we have in our summer mental health clinic. We will be having our Olathe Public School counselors, our social workers, our school psychologists, our student wellness advocates, and our mental health liaisons all able to provide services in our summer clinic. In addition, we are going to have behavior consultations for our parents who are just struggling with some of their kids' behaviors. Our behavior coaches in our district will be providing this service. And so I'm really, really excited about that. Other new options is that we are going to have the option of virtual sessions for families who are unable to attend Mill Creek or feel less comfortable about doing that. Virtual sessions will be an option for them. We are also offering a group session for parents specifically, and it's titled "Tackling Your Child's Challenging Behaviors." And that will again be run by our behavior coaches. I checked our signups right before I came up here, and that group, we have to have a minimum of three people in order to run we are gonna be able to run. So I'm super excited about that. We will also be offering group sessions for our students on the topics of anger management, anxiety and stress management, and social skills. So we will be running those as well. In addition, with the increased funding support that we receive from the foundation, we will be able to offer approximately 250 individual sessions per week. So really, that's, that's a huge increase. We are accepting signups right now. This is open to any Olathe Public School student, staff member, or a staff member who, whose students might be in another school district. We will serve their students as well. So please, I encourage anybody who is interested to go to this link. They can go ahead and sign up. It, it's a super easy process. And as a reminder, these are, sessions are completely free. Our summer mental health clinic will be opened starting May 25th. We will run till August 4th. That's the day before teachers return. So it is truly an all-summer-long type of clinic. We will run Monday through Thursday. In the summer, our buildings are closed on Friday, and we will observe that also. But we will have sessions between 8:00 and 5:00. It's brief, but that's the highlights. And again, I hope everybody can feel my excitement because this is something truly amazing. And if it wasn't for the support that we got from our staff, from our public school foundation and community, we wouldn't be able to do this. So I'll take any questions.
Any questions?
This is so exciting.
It is. It is.
Awesome and needed.
Yeah, agreed.
All right. Thank you very much.
You bet.
Thank you.
All right, and now moving to action consent. I know we have one question, but if anyone wants to pull something out here and ask a question, then we'll lump them all together.
Yeah, I had a question on if we could talk a little bit about 4.12, which is the Homegrown Institute's comment there. And I, I was just gonna ask a little bit more on the details of, you know, we, we talked about some of the reading curriculum. We heard a little bit tonight as well. Just kind of wanna just get a little bit of how the curriculum is put together with the techniques and things that we used and how we decided. I just, kind of, if you could just kind of go a little further in that, I'd appreciate it. I've heard from a few people in the community about it. And just if you wouldn't mind, I'd greatly appreciate it.
Absolutely. Do you want me to speak to the writing or the reading or both? Or just kind of our comprehensive view?
Yeah, kind of, kind of comprehensively, if you wouldn't mind. That would be great.
Absolutely.
Because it all ties together ultimately.
Sure. As you heard us talk last month, when you heard us speak about all of the dyslexia mandates and us meeting the structured literacy needs, obviously, we are incredibly passionate and believe strongly in that and are working towards building our staff's capacity to understand all of those components and the importance of those. We also, though, believe that we need to have a comprehensive literacy plan for our students, K-12. And some of that involves coming at things differently. And so when we talk about the writing, really back up just a little bit. When we looked at the grant, we actually proposed looking at the workshop approach. And that is the structure in which the units of study, the resource that we were, that Tiffany spoke about tonight, fits within that workshop approach. And what that workshop approach does is it really allows teachers to differentiate. But within that, what we found and why we landed on something like units of study is because of the way it explicitly teaches the writing process to our students. So structured literacy and the writing that goes with the, within structured literacy is more about the spelling and the handwriting and sort of the construct. But we also must teach the writing process. And so with the workshop approach, that allows us to focus on the process. And so those lessons are structured as an I do, we do, you do gradual release within the units of studies, what will feel very similar to the, the way that the students are receiving their phonics instruction. So the confusion isn't there. We have that I do, we do, you do gradual release. And so basically, that writing just gives them that. And then if we get into the reading that you all approved last month as well for the middle school, it's very, it's the same structure, the workshop structure. Explicit lessons, though, instead of in phonics, about how to be thinkers when we read, right? The comprehension strategies that they need to employ as they're moving forward and reading text. Does that help you? More questions?
I just, my biggest concern is like the way that we're, like, the teachers are and the way that they're, I mean, this is gonna be a lot thrown at them coming into this year and just making sure that we've got everything in place and we're not throwing too much at them as we go about this change. And I know we're going, working through the grant process and getting some of this, but just making sure is this all coming through that process and, and gonna be, I'm gonna say taught to them, but kind of walk through the, the staff on this, on the processes, not only behind the scenes, but also the day-to-day a little bit. And it seems like, like a lot of information, they're coming from kind of two pieces.
Absolutely. So the focus at the elementary level next year will be solidly in that phonics and the structured literacy and 90, excuse me, 95% group and getting, supporting the teachers in moving forward with that. At the middle level, that literacy adoption that we just did is for that semester course, and we'll be providing them with the training and the support that they will need.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Any other questions for them or for the consent? If not, can I get a?
I move to approve consent agenda items numbered 1.01 to 1.12 as presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Schultz. Thank you by Mr. Whitcliff.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, and then moving along to action bids, contracts, agreements. I have one question, but I'll let anyone else, if they have anything they'd like to pull out. I was wondering if we could get somebody to come up about 4.01, the background screening investigation services. 5.04, sorry. Just what it is, how long we've been doing it, what it entails.
Good evening. I am LaShel Sig. Nice to meet you all. So yes, we have utilized validity for quite some time in running background checks, and this is for any of our individuals that we hire or employ in the district. So it's a thorough criminal background check that is conducted using their social security number and provides any kind of information regarding any criminal record that may be on file in any jurisdiction, county or state that they've resided in, or that their social security number shows up in. In addition to that, it also runs a sex offender registry check. So if we have any concerns that arise from that, that also shows up on that report.
How long have we been doing this?
Oh, gosh. I would say, this is my first year. I would venture to say we probably have always been doing it. Dr. Donovan, do you know when we initiated?
Sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot there.
Good job, Joe.
10 years. Okay.
At least 10 years.
10 to 15.
Okay, 10 to 15. All right. That was, that was all I needed. So if nobody has any other questions on that or any of the other 17 items, I can agree with the motion. Thank you very much.
I move to approve action items, bids, and contracts, 5.01 through 5.17 as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeon. Thank you by Mr. Whitcliff.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
All right, and on to action other. We've got some KASB nominations, so I'll just remind everyone because we tend to flub this up. So we'll nominate, and then we have to make a motion to cease nominations, and then we make a motion to appoint. So right now, we're just in the discussion phase. I know for, or I believe the Government Relations Network was Leeta, and then Brian, you were the nominating committee. So I don't know if you two would like to continue to serve, if there are others that are interested.
I don't mind.
I'm happy to serve or pass the baton, either way.
So you're nominating each other.
Okay, sure.
I move to cease nominations.
Second.
All right. Motion by Mr. Boyd. Thank you by Mr. Gary.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
All right, and then we need a second motion.
I'll move to appoint Brian Gary to the 2021-2022 KASB Nominating Committee and to appoint Leeta Felter to serve 2021-2022 as KASB Governmental Relations Network Representative.
Second.
All right. Motion by Mr. Whitcliff. Thank you by Ms. Schultz.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
All right, and then on to 6.02. Did anyone have any questions about the budget development goals and timeline? If not, can I get a motion?
I move to approve action item 6.02, Budget Development Goals and Timeline.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gary. Thank you by Ms. Schultz.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
All right, and then the final, 6.03. If not, any questions on instructional materials? Get a motion from that.
I move to approve the purchase of the new resource and instructional materials for CTE Middle School courses as presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Felter. I don't know who got the second.
Mr. Boyd.
Right. Oh, Mr. Boyd, I didn't hear. Sorry. Thank you by Mr. Boyd.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes.
All right, on to future action items here. And then to 8.01, we have the April Head Start Director's Report for everyone to look at, and then on to topics of discussion for the board. Does anyone have any topics to discuss?
Just a huge thank you and appreciation to our teachers on Teacher Appreciation Week. Obviously, could not do this without you, and it's been a trying year, and I just appreciate all the work that you've put in for our students and families.
Second. Third.
Tito.
That was a, took the word right out of my mouth. Shannon, thank you.
That's why I jumped in quick.
Yeah, and I just echo that, you know, as a parent of three in the district. I mean, I see the positive impact you have on kids firsthand, and as a parent, not as a board member, I appreciate that. So thank you, teachers. Anything else? All right, on to superintendent comments.
All right. As we've worked through tonight's agenda, I want to do a little bit of a teaching moment here because we do work through, these are business meetings, and we work through the agenda, but some of the basic principles that you as a board have established and as a district that we follow are evident in tonight's agenda. So if you look at the presentations you heard, you know, it starts and we think about our pillars with our strategic plan, and it's all about the people. We're a people business. And you think of Teacher Appreciation Week, which I'll address here in a minute, the real-world learning. There are so many examples just on tonight's agenda on where we've taken an exceptional foundation, and we're not satisfied with being complacent and wanting to continue to move our school district forward so that our students truly are prepared for their future. So if you think of the real-world learning, that expansion of the partnership with the Kaufman Foundation is allowing us to take some steps. And to Mr. Gary's comments this evening, we know there's so much more potential there, and we're aware of that and continuing to take those steps. When you think of a district as large as ALATHA, the mechanics and the logistics to provide entrepreneurial experiences or just internships, think about how many juniors and seniors we have, trying to provide them, each with an internship experience is a massive undertaking. But it's not, we can't do it. It's, we're trying to figure out how do we do that, and you see that in evidence as we work down through continued materials. When we think about our business practices, the question regarding background screening services, it's up tonight because as we've looked over the last several years and developed a regular cycle to look at services and purchases to make sure we're going back out and do they meet our needs and are we getting the best value? And that's something on the budget and the taxpayer's side. Being very forthright, and here's our budget planning calendar. And we're a little late this year compared to years last, but that's because of House Bill 2104, and it's going to create some issues. So we're always dependent on the legislature. We're still waiting for a school budget. Still hasn't been passed at this point in time yet. We're into the major portion of the timeline for our budget. It always puts you all at a disadvantage when the legislature waits to deal with education at the very end because it squeezes that timeframe. But as you look down through whether it's business practices, it's what we're looking at instructionally, social-emotional. I don't believe there's any school district that I know of that has been as progressive as this district has been for the last eight years or better around social-emotional learning with what we do and provide our students, and a foundation that this spring with The Taste of ALATHA has made that a focus to help fund and fundraise for those efforts. So all of these things are just incredible in the way in which, as a system, we're trying to approach all those different areas. And that starts with you as the board, so I want to thank you and commend you. And lastly, I want to circle back around to teacher appreciation. As I think about Mother's Day as well, teacher appreciation, Mother's Day, to me, are very similar in that we shouldn't have a special day just to say thank you to our teachers and our mothers, but that's the way it works and gives us an opportunity to focus. But the question that came up is, you know, what did you, when you were in middle school and thinking about what you wanted to be when you grew up, obviously, I did not think about wanting to be a school superintendent. Nobody thinks about wanting to be a school superintendent. But the preparation and the opportunities and the exposures, and I'm one of those that kind of came through the back door as a second thought about what I wanted to do with my life, to become a teacher, and don't regret a minute of that. But as I think about teacher appreciation, there are those individuals that helped me get to where I am today, and not because of the content they taught me, but what they taught me about being a human and work ethic and compassion and those types of things. So to Ms. Rogers and talking about saying thank you to a teacher, I want to challenge everybody to reach out to one of those teachers that you think about. And I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and name some names tonight. And as I thought about it, sadly, most of the folks on my list, I can't tell them what a difference they made for me because they're no longer with us. As I've gotten more mature, we've lost some of those. But Corky Jacobs, Brenda Williams, Maurice Plummer, Deb Richardson, Carl England are all individuals that made an incredible, profound impact and made me what I am today. And I want to challenge folks that if you can come up with several of those teachers that made that difference, reach out to them. Do it before it's too late. Tell them what a difference they made, and I think it's really important. The tangible benefits we get as educators are in those types of comments, those kids that come back and see you, or when, if you've been around long enough, some of your former students' kids are now in your classrooms and talking to you. But again, it's, it's an incredibly difficult profession. It really does have to be a calling to be a teacher, and I just want to say thank you to all those that picked up the challenge and make a difference every day in our students' lives. And that concludes my comments for this evening.
Thank you for that. Okay, we will need an executive session, but not the 11.01. We'll need one for 11.03, and how much time do you think you need?
15 minutes.
15 minutes? So about until 7:40.
All right, I move to, move to the Board to adjourn the executive session for the purpose of consultation with an attorney to discuss legal issues for the body or agency pursuant to the exception for matters which would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship under coma. And the Board return to the regular meeting at 7:40 PM in this room.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gary. Thank you by Ms. Schultz.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.